Busy, busy.
Okay, we're live now.
Thank you.
Okay, do you see anybody come up?
No.
Uh, two. Let's see, two attendees.
Oh, I see eleven.
Here they come.
All right, let me call.
Oh, there's a whole bunch now.
Yeah.
Seventeen, eighteen.
Now.
There's, do you have, um.
Uh, let me, um.
Christina, what's happening? Yeah, I just need to be assigned.
Yeah, how do I?
Okay, so assign to type closed caption.
Yes.
Yes, okay, hold on, let me, you see that, Michelle?
No.
Okay.
If you can do it.
I've got it.
Okay.
Twenty, nineteen, now thirty. Yes.
Thirty-one, forty.
Okay, are we ready?
Do we want Kathy to put the agenda up or just keep this committee that we've got?
It might be, if I have the agenda up, it'll be hard for me to monitor the.
Well, then let's not do that. Thanks.
Since there's so many people in here. We've got forty-one now.
Mm-hmm.
Are we ready?
Ready as will ever be.
Okay, I'd like to call this virtual meeting to order. And the first thing on the list is to approve the minutes of March fifteenth. And I wasn't there, so I'll have to sing for that.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Approve the minutes of March fifteen.
All those in favor?
I.
Aye.
Okay. And next, um. We have accept resignation of Joe McGorius Solicitor. Now, when I saw this.
Um, Mike?
Uh, yes.
We have to do that, oh, they just, you just did the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Was that Sarah, Sarah, did you?
Bernie, I second.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to accept the resignation of Joseph McGory as Solicitor. Um. This is news to me. Okay, I don't remember ever discussing this and hiring another Solicitor.
Do you want to answer that, Bernie? We had an executive session.
Yeah, we had an executive session to discuss looking into it and finding out rates of other attorneys. Because the main concern was the expense.
And that analysis was sent to us in a manager's report or close to a manager's report. And you were invited to the interviews we conducted.
Yeah, I wasn't here, but yes, um, but, okay, so what, I don't, I didn't see that memo in stating the rates, but I do have the engagement letter.
And you did see Joe's resignation letter that was sent to three of us.
That's the other, that's the other problem, you're listing this as resignation and he never resigned. He was asked to resign, but he refused to resign.
No, he sent us a letter.
What he did say is that he indicates that the township is going in a different direction. That is not resigning, that is a decision that the administration made. Okay, and I don't, I mean. Again, I don't know what the reasons were to get rid of a Solicitor midstream and not waiting until, um. Reord, which is the normal time that you would do it unless you're having a problem with Solicitor. So I'd like to know what the problems were with our Solicitor, did he not treat us or, um.
Mike, I think that it really needs to be discussed in an executive session because it does deal with personnel.
Well, except for the, this agenda states that he resigned and he didn't, so what are we gonna do about that? We have to change that because we have to vote on, if it's not a, if he resigned, we wouldn't have to vote, we'd be just be hiring another attorney. But since he didn't resign, then we need to vote.
Um. Do you want me to send it to Mark right this minute or would you like me to read what Joe said?
I know what Joe said, I mean, if you want to read it, that's fine.
Well, he, he is essentially saying goodbye to us.
But he did not resign, he's saying goodbye because the administration had told him that they are going in a different direction. John had asked, John had asked Joe to resign, John, Joe refused to do so. And that's why you won't find that in his letter.
Um, I think Bernie made a point that we should have this discussion in executive session.
And that's fine, but how, I mean, how are we gonna get past this?
Yeah, but does it get in the way of appointing Mark?
I think it does because if it's not, if Joe didn't resign, then we have to vote to hire Mark.
Well, we can do that certainly.
I mean, Mark, is that true or am I wrong?
Well, you do need to take action to officially hire me as Solicitor. Uh, now, you could, you could, that action could be taken to replace the existing Solicitor.
That's how I'd have to read, yes.
Okay.
Yes, you would have to read, I don't have the motions in front of me, so, um, you would have to do the motion in a way to replace Joe. With Mark. And then a vote.
Okay. I forgot to write down what page the motions were on, so I'm having trouble.
Sarah.
Oh, that's why, because I'm down on page, I'm on seventy-one now, that's why I can't find it.
It's right behind the agenda.
Yeah, of course, of course, you make it easy for us, so I would. Um, make a motion to accept, uh, wait, what was the word?
To replace.
Oh, to replace Joe McGorius Township Solicitor, I make that motion.
Um, don't you want to carry that further, replace him with Mark Thompson?
Uh, we could make one.
I don't know.
We can make it one, that's the next motion, so we could combine them.
All right. I'll second that motion to replace Joe McGorius.
Okay.
Solicitor.
Now, any questions out there?
I do not see any questions.
Kathy, you see any or is it just Michelle doing that?
Um, Michelle's looking for the questions.
Okay.
No hands. No questions.
Okay, then all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Um, well, before you move on, um, cost was definitely one of the elements.
Well, you bring that up, but then I looked at the engagement letter and the, the charge is actually more than Joe was charging us, if I believe so. And also, the, you guys, I know at one point had a problem with the one-tenth of an hour billable. And it's the same, so I don't, I don't understand that how it's cheaper, but.
Okay, Bernie's gonna tell me I'm opening this, it should be done in executive session.
Yes, save it for executive.
Okay.
I think, I don't, I don't think we, I don't know if you need to discuss rates in executive, actually, I don't think you should, I think rates should be part of the open, um, discussion. Now, Mark, I mean, Mark is now, well, we're not.
Not yet.
We haven't voted, we just voted, so Mark is our attorney, so.
No, we didn't vote to appoint him yet, but Mike, you've got those.
You didn't combine it, okay.
Right, you've got those numbers backwards, though. Mark is the tenth of an hour and Joe was the three tenths of an hour.
No, Joe is one-tenth of an hour.
I give up, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mark Thompson of Lane, McRane as Township Solicitor.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, any comments or questions out there, Kathy?
I don't see anything.
Or Michelle, sorry.
Let me check the hands. All right, sorry, questions, no, nothing.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next we have a police report, Mike.
Uh, thank you, Mike, uh, during the month of March, the police department responded to one hundred and twenty-nine calls for service, uh, investigated seven crimes. Had four arrests, uh, conducted twenty-one traffic stops and investigated two accidents.
Thank you. All right, next on the list is the bills list.
I make a motion to approve the bills list in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I second that motion.
Uh, Michelle, any questions?
I don't see any hands up, I don't see anything in the question and answers, no chats.
Okay, all those in favor?
There is one, somebody put their.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh. Call-in user.
Michelle, this is Brian Curry, I'm gonna step back a question and I'm asking it now because I want to do it before potentially, uh, Mike disappears. The question I have is, a lot of police departments are, you know, I'm gonna say going for heightened awareness due to the events that are occurring this week. Uh, has West Vincent Township Police Department, you know, done anything special with respect to that?
Uh, Mike, you're muted. Mike, uh, can you hear?
How about, how about now, can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, yes, there you are.
Okay, uh, Brian, we've been in contact with county, state and federal officials and, uh, we are working with them and, uh, you know, we, uh, we're taking all the appropriate. Measures in preparation and we're working with all those agencies, so that's, that's what we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, bye.
Michelle, any other?
No, I don't see anything.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next we have the treasurer's report, Michelle.
Okay, so for the month of March. Twenty twenty-one. Sorry, can you see me now? Okay. On the general fund, we have an ending fund balance of three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine, uh, thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, one thing you will notice, I know John Eldridge noticed, um. Some of the accrual accounts on the balance sheet, that has everything to do with the switch over to modified accrual that was approved by the board. Um, I'm looking, I'm checking with Tom to get specifics on his answers, just to make sure I'm giving him correct information. So, um, I'm gonna have to get back to John with those specifics, but I just wanted to make note of that. Um. This month in March, uh, we received. My glasses, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and two dollars in real estate taxes and another five thousand, two hundred and eighteen in delinquent taxes in March. Uh, it was a larger amount because I remember, I think it was February, we didn't collect anything, we were brought down into the negative. Um, so it brings us closer to our twenty twenty-one budget of revenue and real estate tax. E transfer tax collected was nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty, earned income tax was one hundred and sixty-nine thousand and seventy-two for the month of March. So it puts us right on target for the first quarter of the twenty twenty-one budgeted tax revenue. Uh, the township received half of its budgeted alcohol business license fee refunds from the Commonwealth this month. Um, charges for government services is much higher than we anticipated by the end of the first quarter in twenty twenty-one, so I wanted to point that out. Um, expenditure notes, township data processing, contracted services included a Zoom add-on feature and IT service. Uh, and Public Works Vehicle Parts included parts for trucks one, two, four and five. Um. And then in, if you see in Public Works, uh, we have two accounts, one is paved road, one is gravel road. So the way we budgeted in twenty twenty-one is now, uh, road materials are split between paved and gravel. So I noticed that some of it was being put in the old, uh. Account, the GL account for what we used last year, I had to split it in March, so I put them in the correct categories, that's, you'll see that, I made some changes, some journal entries, it's fine. See. And open space for month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, we had an ending fund balance of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and two cents. Um, and I gave a budget breakdown. We had eighty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars in EIT collections in open space. Uh, we're at thirty, thirty percent actually of our twenty twenty-one budgeted amount, so that's, that's good. You'll also see the accounts receivable year-end, again, that has to do with the modified accrual, the accruals for the tax, um, revenue that we're accruing. Uh, Capital Project Reserve, month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, we had an ending fund balance of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Uh, we just had activity, just with some interest. For Capital Reserve. In Capital Road, month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, we had an ending fund balance of four million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and forty-four cents. Um. We had engineering expenditures that included the payment, uh, made to LTL for engineering services on Bertrand, Kimberton, Hounsetooth and Schoolhouse Lane. And capital equipment, month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, we had an ending fund balance of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, the bank note was received this month, uh, so you'll see that on the budget summary. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars was received, uh, the one-time fee of two thousand, uh, five hundred and fifteen dollars was paid. Um, that was paid to the Calhoun, the broker that helped us through this process. Um, and the new twenty twenty-one police vehicle was purchased this month. One vehicle was retired to the Public Works Department, and I believe that's on the agenda today too, talk about that later. Um, in Liquid Fuels, month ending March thirty-first, ending fund balance is two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, we did receive the Liquid Fuels, uh, money from the state as well as a turnback money this month. Uh, we didn't have any expenditures, just the Pico bill for the traffic light. Sewer, month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, we had an ending fund balance of eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Um, we collected twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars in sewer services, that was the activity for. Uh, in escrows, we have an ending fund balance of two hundred and forty-four thousand, seventy-five dollars and forty-four cents. And that is it.
Thank you very much, any questions out there for Michelle?
Um, John is raising his hand, so I'm gonna. Allow him to talk.
Uh, can you hear me?
I can.
A couple things. Uh, I guess, everybody may know, when you put that sixty-one thousand dollars of accrued salary, it increased twenty-twenty expenses.
So.
Year-end.
No.
Twenty twenty.
Sorry, go ahead.
But that's not true.
No, so I, this is what I wanted to ask Tom and he didn't get back to me yet, I wanted to be sure that I'm getting correct information, so. He worked it out as a form. Formula and he took X amount of days from each, everybody's pay going to be, he's taking, it's the amount that's going to be accrued and it's just gonna have to continue from here on out. So. You know, it come, the end of next year, uh, there's gonna be a different accrual, so. That's how that is, that way, I, I was just trying to. Hear from Tom to be able to explain it in a more simpler manner, or perhaps I'm even saying it incorrectly, I don't know. That's what I wanted to double-check. But these numbers are, after all, adjustments for accruals, correct? That much I definitely know.
Uh, they're, they're adjustments to twenty twenty. Correct?
Uh, well, I, I would assume, but again, I need Tom to back me up on this, I would assume they would be, yes, but you can't really go back. So because we're starting, when we were reporting on the DCD report and cash basis for twenty nineteen, how it affects twenty twenty, you can't report in fourteen months. So. I just needed his, to be able to explain it to you, I needed his.
The modified accrual started in twenty twenty-one, correct?
Well, that's my opinion, but i- if you have an accrual which, as year-end, it would go back to twenty twenty.
But you can't, but, but John, I don't think you can if it's a cash basis, uh, year.
Well, that, okay, I've been on, now you can do it.
Yeah.
Further, further to this point, there's accounts receivable of four hundred thousand dollars.
Most of that is.
Account receivable, what?
So maybe, John, maybe you can answer this, and maybe it is twenty twenty-one, maybe I'm misspeak, spoken. I think, so, that, most of that is, it's tax revenue, so we had a sixty-day cutoff, were you in that meeting for this? So we accrued tax revenue for sixty days. So January and February tax revenue, we accrued that. So.
You accrued tax revenue?
Yes, we're putting in for, we're accruing that, going forward, we're doing a sixty-day cutoff and it's gonna be, the tax revenue would now be, you know. Two months prior to, you know, it, it's shifted, that's all.
It seems strange to me, I, I mean, I guess, I, I would have to sit down to get read in on it, but.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that with you.
But I think we should, because to me. The twenty, if you have four hundred thousand dollars in the council table. In January, and it says year-end, referring to last year-end, then you've added four hundred thousand dollars of income to twenty twenty.
So it, it's probably twenty twenty-one, I think, that going forward, I don't know, I would feel much better talking, talking, sitting down with Tom. Because him and I worked through these numbers and at, at the time when we were going through the switch, I remember being very overwhelmed. And trying to wrap my, in all honesty, trying to wrap my brain around it. I remember talking to, who was it with open space, Kathy, Jody?
Jody.
And trying to explain it to her and e- even her, she was saying, well, that doesn't make any sense because exactly what you were saying, that would affect the prior year. So I need, I just want to be sure I have my ducks in a row before I give you a hundred percent straight confident answer. I do know, I will speak and that these numbers are correct, I just want to be able to have, make sure that I'm giving you the most, the absolutely correct information. Before I address it, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet, so.
Okay, good, John?
Brian? Yeah, that is, I'll just wait, I mean, it's, we don't know, right, whether it changed last year, whether year-end, we don't know all this.
I don't think it can, I don't, I mean.
It could be, yeah, we're just preparing to swi, make the switch, eventually, with the end game being switching to all accrual, that was. That was the end game.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions out there?
No, not for me.
Okay.
I don't see anything, let me check the Q and A, no.
All right, well, thank you, Michelle, uh, next we have the manager's report, and Sarah, I heard you're doing this.
I, I volunteered to let you and Bernie opt for it, but, um, as the junior member of the team, I'll just give you some highlights. There were a couple of things that I don't even think got in the manager's report because they're such new things. Um, we, um, were awarded the Clean Energy Planning Grant from the County's Vision Partnership Program. This is a multi-universal grant with us, East Pikeville, West Pikeville and Schuylkill Township. Where we will all be working to get, we'll work together on a lot of the basics and we will craft our own individual municipality plans. We've gotten some, there's a, a small match from each of the four municipalities and. East Pikeville is taking the lead as the Paymaster Contract Manager as far as the county is concerned. So that's just really exciting and our Clean Energy Transition Team has been working very hard for the last year. I think you missed their report last month, Mike, um, they're just going great guns and have lots of good energy. We were awarded the grant, it's in the manager's report for the two EV chargers that will be installed in the public parking lot by the township building. The wiring has already been put in and the charger, it's a dual, doubles charger. Um, it's due to be delivered in early May, so it should all be in place by the middle of May, so that's really cool. Also in early May, before I forget, we will be holding a workshop, the EAC is bringing a presentation. On West Vincent's Return on Environment Report, it's an assessment specifically for us. And that will be during our workshop on the first Monday. But today, we just found out that West Vincent has been identified, this, is the chief still here, put your face back on, chief. The eleventh safest township in the state. And so, we used to be up in the seven hundreds and now we are right there near the top of the list and I think that's due to our great policing and our community. It, you know, we, it's, we don't do things on our own, but we've got a great responsive police department. Who pay attention, keep their ear to the ground as Mike's already told Brian to know as best we can what's going on. And, um, doing a great job and it's being recognized in the data statewide, so congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, Sarah, and I, uh, just real quick, not to interrupt you, but I certainly want to say that the officers do a great job and, uh, a lot of that goes back to, uh, the community too. We, uh, we pride ourselves on having a great relationship with our community and, and we work together, so this is, uh, this is a team effort amongst us all and, uh, very proud of, uh, where we, uh, rank there, number eleven. So thank you.
Okay, I think I've got two more things because one of them, Brian's gonna ask us later, so I won't take that pleasure away from him. Um. Our litter lifters have, um, offered to do a cleanup along French Creek Road, the dirt part between the covered bridge and the Pewtown Road metal bridge, not the whole length of it. So it's all township road and a neighbor who lived down there didn't call us, they called. The county conservation district, they called the county water department to see what we were, are we polluting a stream? And it got back to us through the grapevine, so I'm delighted that the litter lifters are gonna help out and. I did not drive down myself, but I hear there's a few small appliances, so our public works folks will pick up the stuff that's too big for the litter lifters. Um, the, and I, no, I don't, no date has been set for that yet, I believe. Um, Donna will talk about the events this weekend, the other thing I wanted you to know about, Ed and Mark helped out during a planning commission meeting last Thursday. The zoning hearing board had had a. A case before them and, uh, turned down someone's application for relief on a permit about a deck. And it was based on a letter from our former engineer. And so by the time, so the planning commission came, um, zoning hearing board members came to the planning commission and said, please look at this, we think your. Ordinance causes a problem for these people and I knew there had been a UDA there, so it might have its own special zoning district, but we finally got. A good guy, Ed Latchaw, to take a look at it and we now believe that should never have been turned down. So, um, we are gonna look at the ordinance to see if there are other areas, but it turned out to be an, uh. An assessment by the zoning officer problem rather than the zoning ordinance itself. So I just wanted you guys to know that sort of stuff was going on in the advisory and quasi-judicial parts of the township, so. We're moving forward on all fronts on that, I'd say. So I think that's it for the manager's report.
All right, thank you, uh, next on our list is a. All right, thank you, uh, next on our list is a discussion on the request from Hankin.
Mike, we have three hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
John, you're first. John, yeah?
Is it John Eldridge?
Yes.
He's muted.
I know, but I can't, I keep asking him to unmute. He's not on muting.
All right.
There he is. Go ahead, John. John, are you there?
Yes.
Go ahead, did you have your hand up? Can you hear me?
Are you talking to John Eldridge?
Yes, you had your hand up?
Okay. What's?
Do you have a question, John?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the next one. Uh, Brian Curry.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Quick question on the um, uh, charging station. Does, I mean, I assume this thing has some electronics in it, does it track how much it's used?
I, I believe so, but I did not read the specifications. We are getting nine thousand dollars towards the swept twelve thousand dollar double charging station. And. So. It, it's gonna have to have metering and stuff, so I'm sure it's got it, but I can't tell you exactly what form, Brian, we can. Get that information out of the box when it comes in.
Well, that, that's the question I was, is, you know, are we monitoring how much it's being used by people, period? And then the other question is, I believe at, uh, you know, I'm gonna say the commercial charging stations. You know, there's some fee for associated for using the station, et cetera. Is the township, is this thing set up to, you know, charge the user the way most of these are on the commercial side? Or is the township covering all that cost?
I believe we will be charging for it as others do. You know, there's one up at Hankin real near their new dog park. A double station, so they beat us to it to get one installed, but we will be indubitably monitoring the use of it.
Okay, that's, that's my question, I'll be looking forward to the reports on how much is being used in the future.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else, Michelle?
Yes, but I, I'm not sure if it's calling user, Brian, is this you as well? I unmuted.
Going for some reason.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I do not see any other hands up, oh, wait, we have one Q and A. Donnie Delaney wants to know, Kathy, can I see my picture on this, oh, when it's my turn, how do I unmute myself? Okay, Donna.
Well, we'll tell her when it's her turn.
Yeah, you have to, if you can't see your picture on the screen, you have to start your video. Um, and when it's your turn to talk, you put, you raise your hand. And I will ask you to unmute yourself. So I think.
Anybody else?
I don't see anything.
Okay, so we're moving on to five with the discussion on the request from Hankin.
Yes.
Is Neil here or? Who's starting this discussion and what's it about other than the commercial versus residential?
That's what it's about and I fully expected Neil to be here.
He is here. Let me go down.
There he is, he's got his hand up.
Okay, there he is.
Kathy, I was talking and I was on mute.
Okay, Neil, you're there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy, could you also let Michael Hankin in? I know he's, he's also in the audience. And.
There, yes.
And then, could you also give me the ability to share my screen?
Okay, let me. Okay. You should be able to share your screen now.
Neil, is this something, have you made changes to the plan?
No. No, I have not, so, so listen, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you a real brief recap and we can, you can ask me all kinds of questions. Because I, I actually don't see that I could, can share my screen yet, but, so two months ago, I, I came in front.
There you are, you're back. Nope. You're muted again, Neil.
Yep, I got you.
Okay.
All right, so, yes, thank you, Kathy, uh, you let me, letting me into this, yeah, I'm here. Two months ago. Uh, I came in front of the. The supervisors and I also went to the planning commission and it was to. To make a modification, I requested a modification out of Weatherstone, so Weatherstone, the commercial area, right at the intersection of. Four oh one and one hundred. We have the ability to build one hundred twenty thousand square feet of retail, commercial space, office. And two hundred and thirty apartments. The one building that is right along Wingate Drive, right at the intersection of Wingate and Route four oh one. That building will, is supposed to contain. Thirty-three thousand square feet of commercial space on the first floor. And then approximately fifty-two apartments on the second and third floors. What we've been seeing in the, in the retail market is. Listen, we're, we're struggling in the retail market. You know, the, the, we do believe that. Uh, whether, you know, activity and retail activity is, is extremely important for our commercial area or for this. This twenty-four acres, it sits out there at the intersection. And we believe that it's, it's a huge asset to our community. And to the, the surrounding community, so we are definitely. Pushing and trying to bring in retail and office users to help and activate that corner. Realistically, you know, our, our restaurant is, restaurants we have supported, we are financially supporting to bring them in. Uh, we, we brought them in to really to become a catalyst for the commercial area. In addition to that, um, what we've, what we've located as far as retail users. We have a north of Donis coming in. We have a martial arts studio and a salon. These are all users, they, they are gonna take up approximately fifteen hundred square feet a piece. Um, when you start looking at that type, these users and this one building gonna have thirty-three thousand square feet of retail space. It's pretty, it's pretty scary. Uh, I think having vacant retail space on that first floor is something that is not good for, for us, it's not good for the residents. Or is it good for the township? So my request is, has been to modify that one building. To reduce the amount of retail space or commercial space from thirty-three thousand square feet. To eighteen thousand square feet. And. What we'll do with that, that base where that reductions occurring is add in fourteen residential units. That will, and we'll keep the, the retail or that commercial space fronting the square and Route one hundred. Which is really that, that space where all that commercial area is intended to occur. We did, you know. If you'd like, I can actually show you, we did create a rendering of what the building would look like, we wanted to make sure that, you know, any modification to this. Would be. Consistent with the buildings that we've built. Uh, obviously, we look at the project, it's a long term. It is a long term project for us. And want to make sure that, that any modifications that we do make in that overall community. So I will share my screen with you here. Give me a second. All right, so I will try this. I don't know, it doesn't seem to be. Here. Let me. Sorry. Give me a second. Funny, every. Every application slightly different, so getting it all set up here. All right, so here's a rendering of the building. That we're talking about, so Wingate Drive and the residential neighborhood is down this road down, uh, which would be. To the, to the left-hand side of the screen, so this is the portion where residential would occur on the first floor. And then here's the square and then just to the right of this is where it turns and goes out to Route four oh one. Maintaining the retail on the first floor and residential on the upper two floors. Uh, here and around the corner, but really what we wanted to show is how. How we're, we're handling the architecture to make sure that the project maintains consistency with the entire area.
That's the same as it always was.
That is the same. Yes. I'm consistent.
Okay. I guess I thought we had already. Voted on this to approve it back a while ago, no?
We did, we did not, well, so, listen, several years ago, we, we created this change where. We, where the township permitted us to modify the commercial area, bring in. Residential into the commercial area and we created a, a transect from. The low, lower density residential to higher density residential and into the commercial area. What I presented to you, to you two months ago, no, was not voted on.
Okay.
The planning commission did, so I did go to the planning commission, we had. Uh, we had an active discussion about the project and the planning commission did vote in favor of the modification, they saw it as a benefit. So now I am coming to the supervisors and asking that this progress forward.
Okay, well, I mean, fine. I don't see it on the agenda.
Yeah, Mike, we don't have anything from them like an official action, a letter. Anything like that, which is why you don't see it, but we certainly, part of the reason we've got fifty-eight people on this call. Is that there are a lot of people interested and I know some of them want to share their opinions on this as well. But we did not vote on it, we were, we haven't been, it's not like we were presented a plan that says here's the changes. I, I think Neil started out testing the water and it got pretty warm when he talked to the planning commission, so he's trying to keep it moved forward.
Okay, Neil, do you have a plan?
If, if, if this is something that the township will allow me to advance, yes, I will submit a plan. Basically, it is a use change. It's a change in use on the first floor, um, when you look at it from a traffic standpoint, it's less traffic, you look at it from a. From a parking standpoint, it's less parking, you look at it from an impervious standpoint, it's less. I mean, really, quite frankly, it's a new change from an.
Okay, but have you, have you put in a request for that change? In writing?
I submitted a narrative and a letter requesting the change.
Okay. So it can go on the agenda then. So I would, I would move that it goes on the agenda at least next meeting.
We've got some comments coming in from our public. So I, I don't know if you want to answer. Some of those, we have a lot of people here that have been.
Okay, let's open up the discussion and have somebody ask a question.
I do see that Michael Hankin is asking, would it be okay if Michael says a few words?
Yep.
Okay. You hear me? You guys hear me?
He's on.
Uh, thanks. Um, so I just wanted to say a few things, um, first, thanks for the opportunity for us to speak tonight. Sarah, I think you mentioned there's a lot of people in the audience and I know there is. I think a lot of them are in the audience, um, because there's been a lot of misinformation and I. Ask to remove retail in the second building. In fact, we feel very confident in the types of retail that we can get there to fill the, the reduced retail that we're asking for. But we're simply asking to reduce the retail from thirty-three thousand square feet approximately. Eighteen thousand square feet approximately, this is not, again, before everybody comments, I just want to make sure everybody knows, we are not getting rid of the retail. We, we just feel much more confident in our ability to deliver a real vibrant town center with this reduced. Uh, request that we're asking for, and remember, we, we have, you know, fifteen thousand square feet of retail in the first building. Which we've already filled, uh, three fourths of it. Approximately fifty thousand square feet of retail and surrounding buildings that, that could be built in the future. So. You know, you look down, you, you go through X town, you go through Chester Springs, you see home builders, are they building retail? No. We are, we're the only ones doing it and we're doing it at a very large scale, but it's very challenging. I hear everyone and I hear you all ask every time on West Vincent Voices, we want a Trader Joe's, so do we. But it's just not practical in this environment. I also see people are disappointed that we're bringing a karate studio or that we're bringing a beauty salon or that we're bringing. Um, an orthodontist, but those uses are critical to filling a overall comprehensive retail in, in a mixed use. Town center and in order to have restaurants and have the sexy restaurants and bars, you need to have those first, so I think we're doing a really good job. But what we're asking is for us to complete this, we're just asking us to make this small reduction in retail on the first floor of this one particular building. Thank you.
Michael, I read your post on Facebook today and you said you've got some really cool food uses coming. Can you tell us about anymore?
Yeah, absolutely, so I, first off, we don't have any leases signed at this point, but we are talking to, I think, three or four different types of food users. And that, that are very interested in, in, in coming to Weatherstone and I think that will complement what we have already nicely, so that'll be in the. So yes, we do, we do have some.
And where do you propose to put them?
Regardless, they would, they would be, and Neil can, can show up the screen again, but we already have the retail flag marked for that, Neil, the ones. If you, you want to share where they would be on the screen, I can.
Because I'm thinking, we've been talking about this, if it's, if you're getting those things, why not put them on the first floor?
Because you can't fill thirty-three thousand square feet of that, you could, for example, that, that restaurant that we're delivering right now, Revival Pizza Co. Which, by the way, is gonna be really awesome and I hope people, I saw some people think it's just a pizza joint, it's definitely not, it's a full-service restaurant with a big bar. That's about six thousand square feet, that's probably the biggest restaurant that's coming to Chester Springs or Chester County in a long time, so. So to, to, to the restaurants I'm talking about are more two thousand square feet, twenty-five hundred, and then they would be in that shaded area that he's referring to there, so. Um, that, in fact, that, that's, that where he's drawing is the one in particular that we're talking to, which would be a good, uh, which would be a bigger user, but we just.
So you think that corner facing your square would have multiple restaurants in it?
I think it definitely could, and, um, one big one probably right there and then I would think a couple food users here. Um, I mean, generally, I can tell you that you, we've got interest from types of, you know, Asian fusion restaurants, we have an Indian restaurant that's interested. So we gotta, you know, but we also have, um. You know, more bar type users, so we just have to be careful in what we bring, but we want to do something cool there, we have a barbecue user. But. That's, but they're all interested in that one particular site flanking the town center, everybody wants to be on that square there.
Best visibility.
Yeah.
So are they gonna be ready in this eighteen month timeframe?
If we deliver the building as, as we're asking for, you know, I think so, I think Neil, you could speak to that on a timing wise, but I, I think. So I, do I think that, um, sure, if, I think that the building could occur. Or could be developed and built in eighteen month period, do I think that we'll have restaurants to fill that space? That's, that's a, that's a great question, I, I like to be optimistic and think that they will fill that space.
I think that 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 location is an ideal restaurant location, just like Sarah, just like you said and Michael said. And I think creating the space for them is important. We do have a lot of momentum and. That momentum we'd like to see continue.
Thanks. I would like to reassure Michael that I am not one of the people complaining about orthodontists or salons or martial arts. When Neil ran the list of, well, we could have a what what wasn't you were offering us. Nail place and a dry cleaner or whatever. And I said, those are things that people in the thousand homes that. Are very close there to your commercial area. Those are services everybody needs. So I know there will be a draw for those smaller footprint. Businesses once, once you get that first restaurant and people see that it's really happening.
You know, if you ask me, I would say, you know, when you look at Weatherstone, its location, it is definitely, it has its difficulties for attracting retail. So you have to create the space. You have to make a place that people want to be. And the idea of making Weatherstone that restaurant destination location. There's a lot of, there's a lot of value in that. And so people will come and when they go to their restaurants, they will utilize. Other retailers, the smaller retailers. Really, that's what we. That's what we've done in the Eagleview Town Center as well. We've struggled in getting retail users to come in, locate into our Eagleview Town Center. When you look at the amount of retail space that we have there, we have thirty three thousand square feet of retail space. Plus a fitness, you know, plus a fitness center. So the fitness center is not included within that thirty three. And we struggle in in keeping those spaces full. So creating the space is the way that we've. We've been able to. Not even, I can't even say we're a hundred percent occupied. We're not, but to get close to being occupied. And that's what then we do that not only through making of that space, but having activities and the type of, you know, the setting. Plus, we have a tremendous amount of residential that surrounds the area to help support that. Now, what we're trying to accomplish in Weatherstone is very similar. Creating that destination location where people will travel to come out here and to utilize this space. But even so, the amount of retail and commercial space that we have available to us in the commercial area is. Is a lot and we we believe that there's a lot of value in creating this next building and helping us in making that space. We just don't want to be punished. For for accomplishing that. And by by giving us flexibility on that first floor. Is a way to give us a comfort level where we can move forward with that building.
Don't don't use the word punishing, which would imply we were punished.
Not 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 a township punishment.
Okay, just just be sure you.
Township punishment. There is a. There is a financial punishment that would occur. If we had vacant retail space and that and I would look at that financial punishment is it kind of comes twofold. One. In the form of the the fact that you have vacant space and and you've constructed it. And then two, in the form of. The fact that that you have now created a stigma associated with your. Your community.
I think we're recovering from the empty field stigma. Neil, you're doing a great job up there. But about five years ago, you came to West Vincent and asked the supervisors to flip. The amount of commercial and the number of apartments. And you got that. You got more than double the apartments and half of the commercial. And so. Besides COVID. What has happened to change this dynamic for you so much?
So I I think it's a one, it's retail is acting differently. And certainly COVID, I would say, has exacerbated it. So for instance, I would ask you or or the community. Where are you buying? How many times a day does Amazon stop at your house? Right? Retail is functioning differently today than it has functioned five years ago, ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, right? We're traveling less to go to the store. We're ordering more online. Amazon is at my house every day dropping off boxes, right? Whether it's for, you know, the backpack for the kids, whether it. It's sports equipment or, you know, clothing, right? It's it's the so retail is reacting to the way you are purchasing. Your perhaps even food and and me, not just you, not you. I mean, it's it's us as a community. We are, we are functioning differently and now they are responding and they are functioning and they are acting differently.
Neil, I don't think, can I? I don't think it's just that too. I think in the last five years, we've tried, last ten years since I've been here, we've tried to get Trader Joe's. We've tried to get. The big retail users out here, even even, you know, higher-end chain-type food restaurants, franchise food restaurants, and they just do not like the traffic counts. And it's just impossible. It's it's virtually impossible to get any retail user of of a larger size to come out to and commit to Chester Springs. Weatherstone. We want them, one of them just as bad as you.
Yeah, so five years ago, you thought you'd be able to fill a hundred and twenty thousand square foot and some of that was going to be office. And right now you've got very little office unless it turns out to be a medical office or a small user like a. CPA or lawyer's office or something. But Kathy and I did not assemble the comments, but Michael, I'm sure you saw them on Facebook. We have a lot of requests for things that Amazon doesn't bring. The ice cream place, the coffee shop and the fresh bakery. You know, so those and those are things that they're at the top of the list of retail that would be lovely to have right there in the midst of those.
I think everybody's missing the point here. I don't think Hankin is sitting there saying, no, we don't want you. No, we don't want you. No, we don't want you. They're not doing that. It's just that people don't think that they can successfully run a business in this area. Like an ice cream shop or whatever you just said. These, I'm sure, I could be wrong. Neil, are you turning people away with these ideas?
No, we're not turning people away. And listen, if we can bring them in, really, you're each one of those are probably a thousand twelve hundred square foot users. So if you said that, now we're talking about three thousand thirty five hundred, maybe four thousand square feet. This building has thirty three thousand square feet. And so it's, that's a very daunting number. And what we're asking to do is because this building is a mixed-use building. Is to reduce the amount of retail just in this building, not anywhere else in the commercial area. Just for this one particular building, so that we make sure that we do not have a large amount of vacant space.
Do you think this would be the last time you ever came to talk to us about converting commercial to residential? In that development?
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's a fair assessment. Would I I do, I could see us modifying the other buildings. So for instance. Where where we have a fifteen thousand square foot building and let's say we have a user that wants to be. Say an eight thousand square foot restaurant, standalone restaurant. I could see us coming back before. The board to modify the the style of retail or commercial space. But I do not see us coming back and asking for additional residential beyond this.
Are you seeing any of the questions that flash up on the screen?
I am not. I can pull up.
I can read some.
Okay, I think it's because it should because you're on the panel with us now. Just a minute, Michelle.
Sarah, you froze up there. I do see him. Would you like me just to respond to him?
I don't see him.
Well, I mean, we can't, we'll spend all night doing that. Do we have some members out there that want to ask Neil a question?
I have one person with their hand up.
Okay, you want to go to that?
Yeah, and two two comments.
Okay.
So I'll read the comments real quick. Somebody said. Sarah, that there is. Sarah, there is Lonnie, wait, wait a minute. Somebody said, are you charging too high rent in the new center that is keeping the businesses away?
No.
Then another person said, Sarah, there is Lonnie Ice, Grandma Zook's and Ludwig's Corner that all offer ice cream. We do not need another ice cream shop. Another one said, why not add more open space?
So I I'll just respond. So Weatherstone is a planned community. We have sixty percent open space already. This is intended to be the the higher density part of Weatherstone and quite frankly, of the township. So. When you look, Weatherstone was three hundred acres, sixty percent open space. So that was a hundred and eighty acres of open space that's been dedicated. To the township or to the associations.
Well, Neil, I think. On your build out at this point, you have some bigger buildings that are not set to go at this time, correct?
We do. You are correct.
I mean, I have a feeling, I just a gut feeling that you might have a lot more open space for a while.
Listen, I I I hope not. I I hope to continue, you know, to continue to attract more. More users and bring them in to that commercial area. But you're you're right. It could sit there until we find that user.
Well, office space is not doing well either, so.
No, I said, you know. No, office users have totally changed. When you look at the way people function now, you know, so. Me, I'm home. I work from home two to three days a week. I'm in the office two or three days and and there's a lot of people are doing that. And what you're seeing, you know, and what you're seeing is that that's carrying through. And even now, when people are starting to go back to work. Some people just are not going to go back to work. Some people are going to go back two to three days and other people will go back full-time. And, you know, I read an article once where or and said, you know, hey. To really change people's behavior, it has to it has to occur for twelve to eighteen months. This pandemic has certainly occurred longer than twelve months. Our behavior, the way we function has changed. And that's not going away. And we are, we are certainly evaluating our office spaces that we have today and. And trying to make sure that we're creative and provide, you know, to to. Provide different types of office spaces in our existing office buildings. So. I'd say, yes, I agree with you, Mike, that the that the office market has changed and we have not started to even. Feel the impacts of that yet.
Okay, Michelle, is anybody else out there?
Yeah, so there's a couple more comments. Before I get to them, I want to get to hands that are up because they've been up a while.
Okay.
Well, Marilyn Hem Street, I'm going to allow her to talk. Marilyn, can you?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
So I have lived in Chester Springs for twenty-two years and the past nine years I have lived here in Weatherstone. And a large part of my decision to buy in Weatherstone, in addition to, you know, stable. Property values is everything that was promised up at the town center. And, you know, I'm gonna use your words against you, Neil. You're like, basically, you said, if you build it, they will come. So why the rush? Nothing's open up there yet. Why the rush to convert to residential? Let some things open up. Let people see the foot traffic that's going to happen. And then maybe you're going to get more. Commercial people up there. And quite honestly, we don't want, we don't want the chain restaurants. I know I've heard there's going to be a CVS already. And Chick-fil-A is in discussion. I mean, it sounds like it's looking more and more like X and but let me finish. So, you know, I think part of the difficulties, yes, I understand with COVID, things have changed, but. Part of the difficulties is price. Stampede BBQ was very seriously considering. Renting space in Weatherstone and with a ten-year contract with over a million in rent, they concluded. It made more sense financially for them to build their own building and they did. And now they're expanding that building. So, you know, I just, I'm not saying we should say no forever. What I think would be the prudent thing to do. Because if you build it, they will come. I have no problem with hair salon, karate, you know, the little things, the orthodontist. But I agree with Sarah, like nail salon, like those types of services, like when I moved here, I envisioned. I could walk up, get a cup of coffee, go do this, go do that, or meet with friends and go have a drink somewhere. And it sounds like we're going to be able to do that sooner than later with this pizza place coming in. But. I just feel like it is a financial, you said punishment for you. If if the supervisors ultimately decide not to allow this, but why should the residents be punished by not? Giving us what was promised to us. You guys have deep enough pockets. You can sustain. Hankin is not going to go out of business if the supervisors say no.
No, you're correct. So let me ask, let me ask.
I just want to, I'm not, I'm not saying we should never consider any modifications. That's not what I'm about. What I'm saying is. Let whoever you have contracts for move in, see how it goes. If you build it, they will come and that could very well attract. The other. You know, the other retail spaces. I mean, we're a very different community than Eagleview. Eagleview is. I mean, people can decide to go to Eagleview. They go in the other direction. They're in Exton and look what's in Exton up here. There's not much of anything, you know, you go in any direction and there's nothing. Phoenixville is a pain in the ass because there's no parking. So I never go there. I mean, for as long as I've lived up here, we're like, we need more restaurants. I would rather spend my money at a mom and pop shop. I go to Ludwig's Hardware and Eagle Hardware before I go to Lowe's every single time. I would, I would love to see more. Privately owned businesses move in and, you know, somebody commented earlier, we don't, you know, because Sarah was making a point for, you know. Ice cream or coffee or whatever. It's like, yes, Wawa sells coffee. Is there a place for for any of us to go meet up with our friends and sit down and have a cup of coffee? No, unless you want to stand in the middle of the parking lot. So there is a different need, you know, with a little coffee shop, you know. Or a juice bar, you know, so. That's my, that's my piece. So go ahead. Yeah, you have.
Neil, real, real, Neil, real quick, sorry. I I just, I I just want to say what you said was, I I agree with all the uses you say, but what you described to me. Was eighteen thousand square feet of retail and not thirty three thousand square feet. It was a lot of mom and pop coffee shops, all the things that we want to accomplish with this next phase. It's just, that's like, if if the average is a thousand square feet or fifteen hundred, that's nine or ten different uses right there that can fit in the eighteen thousand. So. You know, I that's what, that's what I was, that's what I was hearing. But go on, Neil.
No, you know, I also like your point about. I agree with you that Weatherstone is a different type of retail use than is Eagleview or Exton. And I and I. I kind of mentioned it a little bit earlier. It's really because you have, we have to create that that environment. We've got to create the space, right? We've got to create a destination because you're a hundred percent correct. The retailers look at the rooftops and they look at the area and. The Weatherstone community and the number of rooftops that are in the area are not enough to support them. So there has to be something that's going to draw people in. And that, you know, when we talked about trying to create a restaurant destination. Location out of our retail area, that's what we're talking about. But I agree with Michael. It's eighteen thousand square feet and not thirty three thousand square feet. Thirty three thousand square feet in one building is, it's a thousand square feet more. Than all the retail space that we have in Weather, or sorry, in Eagleview, in our town center. Just so from a comparison standpoint, when you think about the the magnitude of of the amount of space available within this one building. It's, there's a lot of space. We're not looking to. Get rid of of retail. We're just trying to make sure that we create something that that's going to create an active streetscape.
So I, so Neil, so what's your choice here? So let's say the township says no.
Okay. Listen, that's that's. Don't build the building. I really hate that because I do believe that that make it, building that building is something. don't build the building. I really hate that. Um, because I do believe that, that make it, building that building is something is, it's very valuable to uh, creating that square and creating that environment.
All right.
But, but if building that building is like saying, hey, Mike, I got a great investment for you. You give me, we'll say, give me a thousand dollars and I'm going to charge you a hundred dollars a month in rent to, for me to hold your thousand dollars. It, you just wouldn't do it, right? Um, and that's, that's what this building represents. If that's based.
So let me ask you another question. So let's say you, we said, okay, and you build out the residential on the bottom floor. And let's say for some crazy reason, you started getting people that wanted to come to that area, but didn't have the space. Would it be to your advantage to convert the bottom floor apartments into retail?
Before we would convert the bottom floor apartments into retail, we would build additional buildings and try to, try to activate more and out in towards Route 100. So, you know, so let's say that we have a, uh, five or a 7,000 square foot restaurant. We would build, you know, um, the next building, or let's say that we have a grocery, a grocer now. And that, that we kind of vision, would envision going out towards Bertrand Road and we would jump into that building. So there's still over 60,000 square feet of commercial space outside of this building and in those, those lawn areas out towards Route 100. Um, and we are very happy to jump into those as soon as we have a user for those spaces.
Okay. So all that space that you have is either retail or office or is it?
Yep.
Oh, it could be either. Oh, I didn't realize that. I thought some was designated office. Okay. So you'll probably never get to the point where you then go back to that building and redo the bottom floor.
So I think it's highly, I think it's highly unlikely, especially when you look at the, like, this is where I can again come back to say, um, when you look at the way people have changed in the way they function today versus.
Okay. I'm not asking you whether it will happen because the chances are nil. I'm asking you, would it be if for some crazy reason, the market was so hot that you could write all that space on the bottom floor, would it make sense for, for you to tear out the apartments and build retail? Financially, does that make sense? Or is it too much cost then to convert back to retail?
It's too much, it's too much cost.
Okay.
The other point, real quick, uh, you know, you have 18,000 square feet of retail, you, you lease it, but then you got to keep them, you know, one out of five new retail restaurants go under. We're, we're constantly in that cycle where they move out. So just so you, so it's, it's a, it's a very, it's very hard work to keep them in place.
Yes.
So that can't.
And just so you know, we're not just basing this on, on Eagleview or we have other projects, other retail projects. We have a town center down in Florida. Uh, I believe it, we're, we're right around 100,000 square feet of commercial space. Uh, we're very much aware how to, what it takes to put into and to make a mixed use community.
Yeah. And the market in general, everybody knows what the market's doing. So it's a surprise in any way.
That's correct.
Um, Michelle, anybody else out there with questions?
Yeah, I'm going to read two comments and then we have seven new messages. So.
Okay.
Uh, the two comments under the Q and A I have is Hankin open to working with other local businesses financially to bring more retail options to the town center.
Of course.
Okay. Uh, and then the other one is, we already have enough residential units in this area. Township is approving left and right homes, but we need more commercial retail. We were promised grocery store gym restaurants. I am against it.
Okay, next.
Another one that I believe was touched upon on another board meeting, but it's, they were wondering if they could see the breakdown of the current building, showing how much space in that is, uh, that is available after figuring in the revival, the orthodontist hair office, the karate studio and the hair salon. Um, they said, I'm just hoping to get an idea of how many businesses of something of a similar type would fit into the new building if the proposal is granted.
I'm sorry, I, I have that number. I think, I think I know what they're asking. Um.
Okay. I have to, did you, did you want to show, you have the number or?
I don't have the, I, I can just talk, uh, I have the numbers from our system. I can't show anything on screen, but I can give you kind of the, uh, the averages. I think, I think what they're asking is we have 14,500 square feet of retail excluding the fitness, excluding the clubhouse in the first building. So we have 14,500 square feet approximately. I think of that 5,000 or so is the restaurant. Um, so that leaves you with like 90, 9,500. Um, and then, um, you know, and that's comprised of the, uh, orthodontist, that's, uh, of the karate studio and the, the hair salon. Um, and so we have approximately 2,500 square feet remaining. So you could, so we're going, you know, so hopefully we get one or two more users in there. I, I, I think that's maybe what they were asking to get a sense of how many. So the average square feet of the non-restaurant users is around 1,500 square feet.
Right.
So if you take the 18,000 divided by 1,500, that's kind of what we're anticipating, right, Neil? Something like.
That is correct. That's correct.
Okay. And another one is, how will the new community of apartments contribute to the maintenance of the open space in Weatherstone? People still need medical offices to go to. I see a lack of those.
I, so, so I'll start off with the medical office. I agree. Um, we are, we have reached out to medical users. Medical users, just, you know, they function very similar to retail users. Uh, they're, they brand and they also look at rooftops and they locate in areas where they can, and, you know, service the, the greatest number of rooftops. So we, we are at a disadvantage from that standpoint. However, I'd also say that, um, we are kind of the hole in the doughnut when it, when it comes to medical uses. And so when you, you have Phoenixville, you have Pottstown, you have Chester County Hospital. Weatherstone is kind of right in the, in the center. And that's the way we market it to those users and try to get them to, to come up with, uh, and to bring medical uses into the area. So we agree that medical, medical office, uh, whether it's urgent care or, or practitioner is a possibility and, and we've certainly been, we've been approaching them for a long time. Um, and then Kathy, what was the first part of that question? So I answered the second part and I kind of skipped the first one.
How will the new community of apartments contribute to the maintenance of the open space in Weatherstone?
Okay. Uh, so there is an association agreement and, uh, these, so I'm assuming that there's probably talking about the open space between Weatherstone, the commercial area and, um, the residential community. And they have been separated. There's a, an association for the commercial area and there's an association for the residential. They are separate with exception of the stormwater management basin, which is right along Lexington Boulevard, in which there is, in which there are, uh, shared arrangements there because it's a shared stormwater facility.
And Neil, is that the one just to the north of the townhouses by the library?
You're correct. Yep.
It's very wet today. Is it normally a pond?
Uh, is it, it is a, it just, it is designed as a, a wetland basin. So it is. Yes, it is intended for plantings and for, for standing pond and water. Yes.
And just as a sideline, I was asked today to pass on from some people at Weatherstone that that area is getting a lot of construction trash and litter in it. So now the office doesn't have to call you. Thank you.
I will, we will definitely take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay, Kat or Michelle, next one?
Do other people agree with Marilyn Hem Street with what she said? Very well said. Um, Lori Windle uh, said, what about getting a small grocery store such as Aldi's or Lidl since we can't get Trader Joe's? That would take a bigger, that would take up a bigger space and attract more people.
It's, it's, it doesn't matter if it's a Trader Joe's and Aldi Giant, they are all looking at the same criteria. Retail users have certain sets of rules and they do not like to break those rules.
Okay. And then somebody else commented, I feel additional residents are going to overwhelm our existing community parks and play area in the existing Weatherstone.
And we're talking about 14 units. Um, when you, listen, there are studies, Rutgers have, Rutgers has done studies and how many school age children are associated with, with residential units? When you look at 14 residential units from a multifamily standpoint, you're talking about one school age child. I don't believe that we're, we're looking to overrun anything.
So to get off the school bus and walk into the flats today.
Great.
Well, um, somebody has asked about, you keep talking about rooftops. Do you want to give a real quick definition of that?
Sure.
It's not really the tops because you're counting each of the apartments, right?
I know, I, that's a, that's kind of a, you know, a, I'll say a phrase that is used by, by retailers when they're looking to locate in certain, in, in, in areas. And what they do is depending on the type of retailer, they may look at a three mile radius where they may look at a five mile radius. And they count up the number of rooftops. And really what it's telling them is, is how many people are in a service area that will, will likely drive and commute to their facility? And that's what, what I mean by when I say rooftops. And so when you, if you were to look at Google Earth and you look at Weatherstone and the surrounding area, um, you look north, you look east, you look west, uh, there are very few roofs, rooftops. Um, and you look south and there are certainly, there are more rooftops south. But if you are a retailer, you're not looking to locate in an area where three quarters of that is very rural, low, low density. You want to locate down in Euclid or in West Whiteland where you're more in the heart and you can attract more people. That's why Trader Joe's is not interested in coming out to Weatherstone. They are interested in locating in, in more populated, more densely populated area. The type of, the type of grocer that, that we are trying to attract is, uh, a small business, you know, entrepreneur that wants to specialize and, and create a unique type of experience. Something like a, a Kimberden Whole Foods, although I'll say, I will be very clear, we have tried multiple times to attract them. We think that they're great. Uh, we would love to see them out at Weatherstone. Uh, we do think that they are a type of user where it is that, you know, it's a family owned business and their, their branding is something that attracts people. So, um, but again, we have to convince them and we have been trying. But it's that type, I called them out simply as a, a type of user, a type of grocer, um, that we, we believe is viable and, and could, could add a lot of value to the Weatherstone community.
Okay, Michelle, any more?
Yeah, I'm going to unmute, uh, Brian Curry right now because his hand is up.
Okay.
You are unmuted, you are unmuted, you are unmuted. Go ahead, Brian.
Brian?
I, I'm here. Am I not echoing?
No, you're echoing. Yeah, you're not echoing.
Good. Um, I keep thinking about, and, and it sounds like, uh, Neil, you, you eliminated this about converting sometime in the future, going back to retail at these apartments right now. The way that the apartments are constructed, I pick it, it's a one-way direction that it can't be converted back? Or is it just that at this time, we think it would be too expensive?
I think it's not, quite frankly, I think what it is, is it's, it's just unlikely. I think that the demand is not going to be there for one. But if you said, hey, assume the demand is there, um, demolition of something and to create a new use is, it has to be pretty persuasive in order to do that.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you. Makes sense.
Okay, yeah. Michelle, are we getting close to being? How many others?
Yeah, we have two more hands up.
How many?
Just two, she said, just a sec. Neil, when Brian asked that question at probably both the supervisors meeting and the planning commission, you had said that it would be relatively simple. They could be, um, converted back and.
They, they could definitely be converted back.
But I, I agree. It's, it's just not likely. Once you get 14 happy tenants in there, you're not going to want to anger them to a victim to put in an ice cream car that we're all waiting for.
It's not that, it said, I see so much. So I look at this and not only do I see that the amount of retail space that we have within the two buildings, but I also see the amount of retail or commercial space that's available, yet within the undeveloped portion of Weatherstone. And I see it as, as very unrealistic to convert that space.
What percentage of?
It could certainly be done. I, I just want to be, you know, I don't want to give any, I don't want to give anybody any false impressions. Uh, and rather just be, be pretty clear that I, I don't think that it's something that is realistic.
Um, what percentage of apartments are, have you rented or at what rate are you filling apartments?
So the apartments are leasing up at about 10, 10, 11 a month, which from an absorption standpoint, which is, we're very pleased with. Um, from a percentage standpoint, I, I don't know that off the top of my head. Michael, do you have that number?
Yeah, we're, uh, we're about 45% leased now. Um, and like Neil said, we are, we're actually really pleased with the absorption rate. So.
Yeah, I've got to throw this, I'm going to throw this out there as well. You know, I know that, uh, I am glad to see that there are a lot of Weatherstone residents that are here and are participating tonight because really what it tells me is that, you know, you're that you're concerned about your community and you want to make sure that your community stays strong and stays healthy, uh, not for one particular use, but for the overall project. And and that has the same type of view that we have with all of our projects. And we had it when we built the residential, we have it as we're building out the commercial area. Hankin Group is different from, from most developers or from any developer that I've, that I come across. And that is, is that we are, we have a long-term view. Uh, I know the township also has a long-term view and I know that residents have a long-term view. Uh, we have that same view as we build our communities. We do not want to do something or build a building that is going to have an adverse impact or that we perceive will have an adverse impact. Having vacant space on the first floor of this building, we definitely perceive will have an adverse impact on the community as a whole. And that is something that we really do not want to do. Uh, so I know there are some other questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's, I'm going to allow this. So some of them are typing it in chat as well as putting their hand up. So I'm going to mute somebody who put a couple of things in chat that they could reiterate. Um, let's see. Go ahead. Who's?
Oh, it's, it's Donna Rubin.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
So I love Weatherstone and I live in this community and I'm really concerned about the amount of residents, not just the 14 additional that you want, but the amount of people taking over the apartments and using the open space community that we as residents in Weatherstone maintain. And I don't know what the residence of the apartment's contribution would be to maintaining the open space that we as a community pay for each month.
I don't know what open space you're talking about. The walking trails?
Well, no, we have parks inside Weatherstone, like there's Rosewood Garden Park, there's, um, playground equipment, there's a pool. I don't know what, what access those residents in the apartments will have to that space.
They don't have access to those, those spaces. Um, the Weatherstone, you know, the, the apartment community has their own amenities.
So how, how do you keep them from accessing the tennis courts? How do you keep them from not using the parks? Because there's no gate between the apartment buildings and the Weatherstone community. How do you keep them from walking their dogs in?
I think it's, it's sort of the same thing as somebody from outside the, the Weatherstone community coming in and walking in and utilizing the tennis courts. If, uh, if you, if there, if there becomes a problem, then the tennis courts need to become locked.
Okay. Yeah. So there's no financial, so correct me if I'm wrong or right. Okay, yeah, so there's no financial, so correct me if I'm wrong or right. There's no financial contribution from the apartments being built in Weatherstone to the Weatherstone community for the mowing and the maintenance and the care of the community parks within the current Weatherstone.
That's correct, just like there is no contribution, financial contribution from the Weatherstone residential community into the what I'll call the commercial area for maintenance of the trails and the parks and things of that nature as well.
No, we as taxpayers pay pay for that.
They they are, they are completely separate.
Correct, but as a taxpayer, I pay for both. So I pay a an association fee each month for the management of the open space and trash pickup, right? So when the residents move into the apartments, there's nothing to prevent them. And this is a concern I've heard from other residents about us being overwhelmed by the residents of the apartments taking advantage of these spaces. That's why I'm against.
Neil, can I speak up? This is Michael, I run all of our apartments and I can just say, I also play tennis a lot on the HOA courts. And I I've noticed many times before, way before the apartments were built, I've been playing there for years, where both courts were being used by non residents or often. So I think the HOA as a whole needs to do a good job policing that. But when you look at what about Pulte right across the street or Toll Brothers, why, you know, their Pulte is just as close as the apartments. Are we worried about their those neighbors using our open space? I think it's our jobs in apartment community to make sure our residents know very clearly if there's a problem from you guys from the HOA, that they absolutely should not be using those tennis courts. They absolutely should not be going in on your in in the pool area or the playground. I totally agree with you there. That's just a policing exercise that I think is is both on the HOA side and on from a management side, just making sure. This is the first time I've heard that, but if there are issues with that, we we can certainly address that from a property management perspective.
It's not just that, it's people walking their dogs, not picking up their dog poop. I mean, I don't know all of the residents that are in the current community, but certainly when you add the number of residents in the apartments, you add to that, you add to that cost, you add to that problem.
I'm not seeing how that's different than Pulte or anybody else across the street or or anybody that could walk in there. I think that's just, again, a communication exercise that that we have to do and the HOA should make sure they enforce, but points taken.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a couple more hands up.
We should probably put a time limit on this. I don't know what time it is, but.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, so max half hour, okay?
Okay. Should I take one, the last? Chris Williams is next. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, my name's Chris Williams. I am a little late to the meeting tonight. I was actually at another township meeting, so I apologize if what I'm going to say is repetitive. So myself and my family, we've been a resident of Weatherstone for coming up on 15 years. On Friday, I sent an email to the supervisor summarizing the position of my wife and I regarding this matter. But a little background, so I'm not a developer, but in my profession, I am very involved in land planning and land development. I'll offer that since the recession of 2008, the real estate market has been very difficult for retail. And in the 13 years since then, the real the retail real estate market has gotten even more difficult. As evidence of this, just to the south of here, in the more densely populated area of Eagle, they are having a very hard time attracting retailers, which is the reason for the development of all of the gray townhouses in the enclave of Chester Springs between Route 100 and Graphite Mine Road. That area along Route 100 had originally been proposed for many thousands of square feet of retail, including the hopes for a grocery store. But the retailers will not come, which is the reason for as many townhouses as you see. So it's worth noting, and I did catch a little bit of this when I jumped on the meeting tonight. So it is worth noting that when retailers look at new sites, they want to know if there's enough population in the local area to sustain their business. With this in mind, it's 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 pretty clear that if retailers have decided there is not enough population in Eagle, then I firmly believe that we will have a very, very tough time attracting retailers in Weatherstone. Now, again, we moved to Weatherstone, we love the community, we love West Vincent Township, and we fell in love with the idea of Weatherstone Town Center. But given the market, given the economy, given the competitive nature of the retail market, we believe that it's the best thing for Weatherstone Town Center to allow the additional residential units for for really several reasons, and then I'll wrap up. So first off, as proposed, we're only talking about 14 more apartment units, which in my opinion, these are very attractive apartment units. I think Hankin does a very nice job with their building product. If approved, these, if approved, this this will allow the next building to be built as a mirror image to the northern building, which will complete that Main Street feel with buildings on both sides of Wingate Drive, which in my opinion will look great for the town center. When built, this will add more activity and population to the area, which means more customers. And really what I I believe this really is what gives us our best chance to attract retailers to the other areas of the town center. And then lastly, what I what I don't believe we want, and it's not what I want or my family, we don't want a half finished Wingate Drive or an incomplete town center. If the next building is not built, then the town center will look incomplete, which will absolutely not help in attracting retailers to the other areas of the town center, or it could attract less desirable retailers. So just to summarize, I think 14 additional apartment units, which again are very attractive, I think is a small price to pay for allowing the next building to be built, to completing that Wingate Drive Main Street look, which will allow the town center to move forward. It'll it'll create that that vibrancy that we want for the town center. And it'll be a much more attractive overall look for Weatherstone Town Center. So that's it. Thanks for your time. We hope you'll support the plan revision. We believe that this will give our community the best chance to complete the town center and create that walkable community that we all look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Few more comments from Donald Shoemaker. He said, you stated that Hankin has a lot of experience in multi use development. Knowing that these developments are built over several several years, what planning and forecasting was done regarding changes in the market? As a follow up, when the project was started there, were fewer rooftops than there are today? So what was the basis for the larger commercial space when initially submitted?
So we we do, we we study that one, I'd say we know Chester County pretty well. But we also do engage and we we conduct market studies and we based our our planning based on those studies and based on our experience. And that's that's why we felt as though, one, we thought we were going to be able to attract a grocery store, a large, you know, and and that was going to gobble up a lot of square footage. What we found is that, you know, it wasn't that long ago that grocery stores retracted. It was like two, I'm trying to think of that, I don't remember the year. But I guess it was like 2009, grocery stores really retracted and they went really started changing their footprints and they started changing the way they functioned. They started going with smaller stores instead of, say, 60 or 65,000 square foot stores. So the market is constantly changing and we are constantly trying to adapt and to make sure that we accommodate those changes. If you are a long term planner and a long term developer, you are not stagnant. You are constantly adapting your plan. And that's what we've done within the commercial area is we've adapted our plan to fit what we believe is actually viable. And really what we're we're asking for is this this minor modification so that we can build this next building and really try to set Weatherstone in this commercial area on that right path to being successful. We, listen, I I agree 100% with what Mr. Williams said there and that creating creating the square, forming the edges of the square and getting this building up is important. And this is a, this is a tool to allowing us to do it. And we're asking for the board's permission for that, to give us what we need so we can build this out and create the space that everybody's looking to have.
Thanks. Michelle, anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Adrian? Is it Adrian?
Yep, that's right, Adrian.
Go ahead and unmute yourself.
There she is, whoops, she's muted again. One more try. Well, while Adrian's figuring that out, I will answer one, a part of Don's question was 10 years ago, our census had us at 4567, 4,567 residents. Today, the the survey that came out and showed West Vincent, the 11th safest township in Pennsylvania, says that we are at a population of 5887, 1,320 higher than 10 years ago. So we have had a tremendous growth in population, rooftops or not. But we know a lot of that is 500 rooftops between you and the courts of Chester Springs. And it also shows that our median income is just about $125,000, which is higher than most of the municipalities around us on this same list. So we do have some attractive features.
Yeah, okay, Adrian, I guess you're up.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just wanted to say also as a resident of Weatherstone for over 15 years that I thought Chris really summarized it nicely. And, you know, I think getting that other building up is is going to be key to probably trying to get something else in here that people want to see as retail. I just also want to remind residents that people keep asking for a Trader Joe's, but they don't want 14 more residences, which makes no sense because Trader Joe's will only build in a more populous area. So if you don't want 14 residents, but you want a Trader Joe's, Joe's, like, it's kind of in conflict of what you want. And that, you know, sometimes that happens, but I, we're not an area that's going to support something like that. And I, you know, we drive to Kimberton Whole Foods 10 minutes, a couple of times a week. And, you know, would a Kimberton Whole Foods be that I could walk to be great, sure? But I'm still going to drive to Kimberton Whole Foods. And I just feel like people need to keep in mind, we have a lot of great businesses and CSAs and farms here that I just wonder how many people are even taking advantage of that, even though it's right out your door. And like retail has changed a lot. I don't order from Amazon, we really don't get that many deliveries. But I still don't even use that much retail because we basically just go to the grocery store. So I mean, from our perspective, it would be nice to have, you know, a couple more eating establishments. But I also don't really see the need for excessive amounts of retail. And from my perspective, the biggest win we got was Brink Coet. So, you know, I'm kind of more in favor of open space, understanding that the Weatherstone retail space was deemed that, you know, long before we ever moved here even. And I think that Chris did a really nice job summarizing why we'd want to see this building get finished and then add the 14 apartments. And then, you know, that kind of drives us into the next phase, which probably won't happen for a while. So I would, you know, I would say it would be good to see Wingate Drive completed. And that I agree, you're going to have less traffic probably with the apartments than you would with retail. Because living here, I don't really see any increase in traffic with the apartments that are there. Right now, I've been running through this neighborhood for 15 years and avoiding dog poop from the residents who live here. So, you know, I don't, I see more people walking through here that seem to be coming from Pulte than the apartments. And I do think it is up to us to kind of police that situation and see if it's becoming a problem. So I I guess I would just say I support it and I want to thank Chris for eloquently submitting his comments.
Thank you, Adrian. Neil, the reminder from Adrian about CSAs. How about you tell people about some of the events that are already planned for your square at the flats or Weatherstone 2, as we call it?
Michael, are you may, Michael, you may actually be better versed on events that we have have planned.
Yeah, I think we wanted to complete the, we we certainly want to complete that first building. And we have a really good marketing and planning person on our staff. And I'd love for her to, you know, Brooke is her name, and I'd love for her to meet with you guys and and come up with really creative uses for that. We're talking about farmers market.
Yeah.
She's definitely live music, but probably not concerts at the scale of Eagleview per se, but live music. You know, we're, that's an area where I think we can really work here in the Hammond community to come up with really cool events, so.
Michael, yeah, Mike Brooke has already been in touch with us about events. And so, but I was just thinking that I would hope you would showcase some of those local CSAs or farmers or.
Yeah, I would be all for it.
We have a place, several, I think, but one definitely right on 401 that has honey and stuff like that. So I think if you're willing to expand your Eagleview farmer's market or change it out and get more West Vincent retailers, grocery retailers or farmers.
Actually, somebody just, one of my colleagues, I guess, is listening in and just just texted me and said that a vintage market starts mid June in the square, which is going to be a regular thing. So I don't know exactly what that is.
Vintage, like old vegetables, right?
Yeah, vintage market starts mid June in the square, which will be a regular thing, so.
Okay.
Okay, Michelle.
I have unmuted Bill Beeble.
Beeble, yes. Yeah, hi, I'm Bill Beeble and my wife Nancy and I have lived here since 2006. And we moved in looking forward to the commercial area as well and are happy to see it finally being built. I do want to speak to just a couple of things. One, people at various times have used the term that we were promised certain things. And being involved in a little bit different aspect of longer range planning, I think there were good faith objectives and expectations and things of that sort. But certainly I wouldn't construe them as promises. And as one example, there was to be a YMCA in the original plan. I happened to have been on the Board of Directors of the Y when we decided it was not financially feasible to go forward with that and canceled our plans. And that was not a Hankin decision, that was a market reality again that forced a change. Disappointing, but it was the reality. So from our standpoint, we think it is important that Hankin go ahead and build that next building with the slight modification of adding those 14 first floor units. And it's kind of a chicken or the egg, I think. And if it's not built, I think it's a high probability it becomes a self fulfilling prophecy that it's a much longer time to get it done than if we go ahead, put this next building up and get closer to critical mass in that commercial area or town center area. So we strongly support the supervisor approving a change in those plans to shrink the retail space by putting 14 apartments in that first floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, Bill, just I have a question for Bill. And my question is, what would it take to get us a Y there now that 10 years have passed?
I have, I have to.
I can, you know, I'll just throw this out there is that no fitness is it is, there are no fitness facilities building, growing, expanding, opening right now.
Yeah. And I can't comment because I'm no longer on the board of the Y and haven't been for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, next.
One last thing, somebody asked to reiterate the comparison of the overall square footage of retail space at Eagleview versus Weatherstone, as I believe it shows the overall scope of commercial space even with this reduction.
So in Eagleview, in the Eagleview Town Center, our retail space in the town center is 33,000 square feet. And then we also have a 20,000 square foot, the former Y, we had a YMCA, YMCA pulled out of Eagleview. And we ended up putting in a different fitness user in there, we have ACAC. So when you compare the 33,000 square feet that we have in Eagleview in this one bill, or sorry, 32,000 square feet of retail in Eagleview Town Center, we have in just this one building, 33,000 square feet proposed. And we're looking to reduce that to 18,000 square feet in this one building. We still have the ability to build over 100,000 square feet of commercial space within the Weatherstone community. So, so that's a, I mean, it's, this is. So, so that's a, I mean, it's, this is, Weatherstone is designed with a much greater retail, commercial space than is our Eagleview Town Center.
So in the town center, all of those live work things, those aren't in your calculations, right?
That's correct.
So it's just that block of restaurant buildings essentially?
It is. What do we have there? One, we have the Brickside, we have El Pastor, sushi, coffee, that's Twin Valley Coffee.
We also have a pretty big vacancy there too.
We do, but we've got six restaurants.
And a bookstore still.
Yep, and a hair salon and and a Rita's. Rita's is pretty nice, yeah.
So it's just that one building though?
It is. No, it's two buildings, two buildings.
They're side by side across from the park, okay. Yeah, the staircase in between or something.
And.
Yes.
One last question, you plan to convert the apartments in the future to condominiums?
No.
Okay.
That was quick.
Michelle.
That's it. Marilyn Hempstead just commented that there are gyms moving in. Max Fit is where Genardi's used to be.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so let's wrap this up and move on to the number six old business, resolution number nine dash twenty twenty-one.
Um, Mike, let's just, I'm sure Neil wants to know if we're going to act on this next month.
I would love to see it acted on. I'd like to do it today, but.
Well, 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 listen, so here, can I, can I propose this? So, listen, I under, when we went through and we modified the commercial area last time, really, what the board, the board did it in two phases. The board did, said, hey, we're in agreement. And basically, I made a motion that said, we are in agreement with this modification. Go do the site planning, the things that you need to do from dotting your i's and crossing your t's from a planning perspective with the township engineer. And then when you come back, we will grant you your final plan approval. That was a way that it gave us the comfort level that we were, we weren't working against each other and instead we were going down a path together. I would ask that you do that same thing, whereas you you pass a motion that says, yes, as long as our consultants don't find any issues with this, we're in agreement.
Um, I'm not sure. I'd have to check with the Phoenixville region. I don't think this hits the threshold for a regional review, but it might be because it's part of the larger development there. And likewise with the county, whether it would have to go to the county for review. So I don't know that, pardon me.
I don't think this would go in either direction. Talking about fourteen units, talking about eighteen thousand square feet, I think, right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
But I, I still wouldn't want to make a commitment of what we would do if we have to wait for either of those.
I'm not asking you, I'm not asking you.
He's not asking for that. He's just asking, is the board on board with the change?
Yes.
And then he'll start having to do all that other work and.
Exactly.
Regional and everything else.
He'll send me in motion.
Right, right now he's just sitting waiting.
Yes. Can I make that motion?
Are we?
No.
So, do we want to make that motion? I'm guessing there's a no there?
No.
No.
Okay. Sorry, Neil.
Okay, so does that mean the discussion is over?
Yeah, if we're not going to, so what are we saying? If we're not going to make a motion to say that we're on board, we're, are we not on board then? Are we saying that, don't do anything because we're not on board with this?
I would answer his question by saying it's over for today because Mike cut us off at nine o'clock.
Okay, so I would suggest that we put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
May seventeenth.
Okay, so, all right, so can I ask this? Could I ask that Mr. Thompson draft a motion? And that way you'll have a motion that you could either act on or reject at the next month's meeting.
I agree.
I could make a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare a resolution to allow you to modify the development plan for the town center.
Okay, I don't think that's anything we have to vote on. We're just directing our attorney to write a motion.
I made a motion.
Okay, second. All those in favor? Aye.
No. No, wait, did that?
I think that gives you your answer there.
Oh, so that was two noes in it. Was that, is that what I heard? Okay. Okay.
But you're welcome to come back on May seventeenth. It's my birthday. I'd be happy to see you.
Okay.
But I don't know what the point is because you just said no.
They're not even moving it to a motion for the next meeting.
And right, so.
So there'd be no reason for you to come back, I guess.
What we didn't do is engage our solicitor to draft something. That's what we just voted on.
Right, but there'd be a reason behind your no vote on him doing that, which I don't understand. So I'm just trying to see what Neil should do, I guess. I don't know. I mean, this has been going on for two, two months now, so. I don't know what's the change. I don't know what change is going to make to have that motion ever brought to the table, apparently.
Okay, so let me ask it this, would you like me to come back next month and discuss this further?
I guess that's your choice.
What'd you say, Bernie?
I said, not from my perspective, no.
Um, I'd like to hear what you're thinking after you've had a chance to think about all the feedback that we've gotten, given, gave, gotten over the last month or so.
Who are you speaking to?
I'm talking, you can't tell I'm looking straight at Neil.
Feedback.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
Take care.
You too.
Okay, old business, resolution number nine dash twenty twenty-one.
I will make that motion. Adopt resolution nine dash twenty twenty-one requesting a Greenway Trails and Recreation Program grant for the Brink Coed Township Park Phase Two.
Second motion.
Uh, any questions or comments?
I do not see any.
Okay, this is, I, this is another grant application. But it does remind me that I forgot to tell you guys, we're going to need to name that park pretty soon. We talked about it last summer, Parks and Rec has talked about it. So I think we want to ask the public to give us their suggestions because it is now the West Vincent Township Park at Brink Coed, which is too much of a mouthful. So send your suggestions to Kathy. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is new business, Stormwater waiver.
I make a motion to approve the Stormwater waiver request for thirty-nine sixty-six Powell Road. Is Brian Kulikowski here?
I'll second that motion.
Any comments or questions, Michelle?
It's Brian Kulikowski here.
Michelle, you're muted, by the way.
Yeah, I was, I couldn't unmute myself. Yes, hang on, I need to unmute Brian. Oh, that's Brian Curry.
No, I want Brian Kulikowski. Because he's the person who knows what this is.
Yeah, hang on.
He was.
Hey, he's there.
He's there.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, long time no here.
Hello.
Okay, so what's the, you asked for Brian for?
To find out what this is about.
So thirty-nine sixty-six Powell Road. Michelle, would I be able to share my screen?
What are we doing here?
Um, I asked Michelle if I could share my screen.
Yeah, I don't know. She didn't answer.
Or to a panelist.
Kathy?
You should, yeah, you should be able to, Brian.
There we go. Thirty-nine sixty-six Powell Road. Good evening, everybody. Is the property located along Canard Way at the boundary between Euentract and the houses behind it, there's a gate right here, this property?
The Southdown subdivision.
Yes. Fox Hollow, if I remember correctly.
Sometimes, yep.
They're proposing to build a pool in the side yard plan. Looks like this.
Right.
They have provided a compliant engineering design for a stormwater system. I reviewed it from, was submitted last year. I reviewed it. I, the contingent or conditional approval was completed in February, contingent upon the applicant providing stormwater infiltration testing for the bed, which is located in this area right next to the pool. They went out after the snow and tested and they did not get any infiltration results. So they have come, they've provided a request to the township through me. I provided to the township with a letter where they have requested the waivers from the infiltration volume and also the water quality volume associated with infiltration is two sections of the ordinance. The waiver would actually be from section three oh five A, three oh five E, and section three oh six E of the Storm and Management Ordinance. The design is for what's called a Aqua Blocks or some people calling milk crates. They're basically a plastic crate that's designed to be in the ground to provide stormwater volume underground. Everything, the stormer system, which is where my red cursor is, is underground. Discharges through a controlled system and will enter into the stormwater system in Powell Road. That system is located right here. Pipe goes under the road and discharges into the stormwater management basin. It's across Powell Road. The stormwater system on the property will reduce the flows to below what they are today. So there'll be no impact to the overall stormwater system.
And you showed that the stormwater basin a little more, yeah. So that's what that is, is just.
This is, this is, this is above ground basin right here. This is the outlet structure which discharges, I believe, about right here. This is a double inlet in the road and the low point, which collects all the water that comes down Canard Way both directions. Pipes under the road to this inlet and the pipe goes from the single inlet here. And this is the end wall outlet structure that discharges water into stormwater basin.
And what's the rest of that parcel?
This twenty-six acres is open space.
Okay.
The open space, it goes out. If I zoom out, you see it continues to go out into the open space in the woods.
And does the trail go through there?
Which trail are you talking about, sir?
The connection from Fox Hollow to the Eagle Farms Trails.
The connection is the sidewalk, I believe, right here.
Okay, we'll look at that another day. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Okay, do we have a, a motion and a second?
Yep.
And is there any questions out there, Michelle?
Um, I do not see anything in the chat, but Brian, can you stop sharing your screen? That's better. We have, Brian Curry has his hand up.
Okay.
You are unmuted.
Brian K answered Brian C's question. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have resolution number ten dash twenty twenty-one. Emergency Operations Plan.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution number ten dash two zero two one, adopting the Emergency Operations Plan for West Vincent Township.
I will second that motion.
Any questions, Michelle?
Brian C has his hand up again.
And, um, our emergency operations manager is here if we need him to answer any questions.
Okay, Brian Curry, you're muted.
You are unmuted.
Okay, Brian.
There we go. Is this something we do every year or so many years for Lumerick?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Bunch.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we have a request from French and Pickering.
Make a motion to approve a thousand dollars for the request from French and Pickering to support the French Creek Iron Tour.
I second that motion.
Okay, well, like always, I have a problem with this. We continue to take money from the residents without their consent, other than voting for the people in office, to distribute their money to charities that they may or may not agree with. And when we give money to a charity, it's no longer charity if you're, if you're not giving the person that's giving it an option. It has to be given willingly. And we are sitting here, the three of us, and divvying, divvying out money to different charities for the residents of this township. And I, I just think it's wrong.
Mike, you call it a charity and that's really a mischaracterization. I mean, they, the French and Pickering, not only are they sponsoring this, this tour as they do every year, and it's sort of like a self-promotion of the township because here's, I don't know, five hundred bicycle riders.
It's still char, it's still giving, it's still picking and choosing different organizations to give money to, just like the library. Giving money to the library is the same thing.
Sure, but they do a boatload of work for the residents of the township.
I know, and the residents should be donating money to these organizations. I agree a hundred percent, but it should be a choice. It's not charity when it's not a choice. That's the whole problem.
Yeah.
And I don't like to be the deciding, I don't like to be sitting up here deciding where to send my residents' money to on optional or non-t township items.
Okay, well, you're.
Yeah, I know. It's only my opinion. So any comments or questions out there, Michelle?
I don't see any.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Okay, next on the agenda.
Motion to approve the request for the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Commission, to do monthly projects to improve environmental health, to improve the environmental health of West Vincent Township land commencing on April twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-one.
Earth Day.
I second the motion.
Uh, any comments or questions out there, Michelle?
Brian Curry has his hand up.
Brian, you got unmuted.
You are.
We got to turn it on there.
Uh, the question I have is what are these monthly projects that are proposed? And for how long are they going to go for? Is this for a year's duration or is it for five years they're, they're going to be done? Or, you know, can you give, you know, some color, some substance to what, what they are?
Donna Delaney is here. She could answer that question.
Can somebody? Michelle, can you open up Donna?
Yeah, I just.
I got it. Is that, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, Brian, thank you for asking. I hope this will go on forever. We're hoping to collect volunteers in the township who are interested in nature and the health of the environment and do a little project every month. So we'd like to take care. So, uh, we'd like to take care of gardens in the parks to benefit pollinators and in the process teach residents how to do that at their own houses. We want to take care of the tree tubes on, protect our arperium buffers, we want to, um, uh, protect baby trees so they're not eaten by deer, um, does that answer your question?
Brian? Oh, he, he just muted himself, the answer was mine, I mean.
The, the, they sound very good, no question about that. Uh, is the township gonna get some type of summary on some type of periodic basis every three months, once a year? Will be included, I forget whether the EAC does an annual report or not, but will the township get a report of, you know, all the good stuff that we've done and how this has benefited the township?
I think that's a great idea, Brian. Um, maybe we should, um, we can ask the EAC for a quarterly report on stuff like that because they, they may also be telling us what issues they found or what other support they would need from us, and so I see that it could help make the program even stronger.
And maybe a monthly, uh, announcement from, uh, the committee of what they're, what they're doing next, so they get more volunteers.
Well, Mike, I am hoping, you know, that, that, uh, Kathy will help us and post it on the township Facebook page, so. It's what you mean or do you mean something more, um?
Yep, he means.
At our meetings that, um, this next week or two weeks from now, we're gonna be doing X.
Okay.
Um, and also included in this is this is on township-owned land, there may be need to authorize parking on township-owned land or arrange for parking with a neighbor if it's a place where we don't have car parking. So it's, it's a little more than working there, but I think we can umbrella those logistics under this motion. Anybody think we need to make the motion more elaborate?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions out there, Michelle?
Uh, no, I do not see anything.
All those in favor?
Wait, Brian Curry's hand went up.
Yeah.
Twice.
Well, I have to keep on muting the second one.
Yeah.
You cut me off a little too short. Uh, one thing about posting stuff on Facebook, if you ever try to find anything on Facebook, it's impossible. The other thing is, not everybody is on Facebook. So, I would suggest that you throw it on the township website, you at least have a chance of finding if it's there, because Facebook is, you just scroll backwards forever until you happen to go and find stuff. You know, that's, you know, it's tough.
Okay, thanks.
And I think you're right, Brian, because these are going to be essentially township activities, so we could put them on the calendar. Now, some of the litter lifting activities are done under Penn Dot, so not everything that's going on would be on our calendar. But if it's a township event, it's very reasonable to do that.
It's, I'm gonna add to that, Sarah, you made a very good point. It would be good, great, to put these things on the township event calendar because with the exception of regularly scheduled meetings, the township event calendar is real thin. So, I'm gonna say these ad hoc things or that happen, you know, the, I'm gonna say not normal meeting issues definitely should be on the events calendar, good point, thank you, Sarah.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertise, whoops, wrong one, advertise the purchase of twelve mobile radios from Metropolitan Communications for the Public Works Department in the amount of nine thousand one hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents. And yes, Brian, it was in the budget and the budget line was approximately thirty thousand dollars. So the chief has done a really great job in working with Public Works to come up with uh, great prices and I believe flexibility for our, this is so that all of those vehicles are connected to each other and to the township because as you know, you can't rely on cell phones every place around here, so it's really for safety and efficiency.
Second emotion.
Okay, Michelle, any questions, comments?
No, I don't see any.
All those in favor? First quarter report. What is first quarter?
Mike is, Mike is here. Mike, Mike Schwinninger, did you want to say something?
Mike, I just wanted to add, if I really, uh, could, uh, I know you voted to approve the reins, I just also wanted to make the board aware that this will also now eliminate the, uh, quarterly bill with the, uh, Land and Mobile Corporation that, uh, we pay eight hundred and fifty dollars every quarter, so we will no longer be paying that. Once we go on the county, okay?
Alright, alright, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, the quarterly report is something that John, the first quarter report, John sent out to us. And it will be on the website tomorrow, but since it is, it is this tremendous wonderful, I've never seen something like it. He's given us a first quarter report on budget year-to-date activities year-to-date. But I think we should postpone that for next month so that he can answer questions people might have about it.
Alright, no problem, uh, next one is the authorization.
For the Houndstooth Lane work.
Lane work.
I'll make that motion for authorize advertisement for bids for Houndstooth Lane Construction Project.
Second emotion.
Any comments, questions, Michelle?
Brian Curry has his hand up.
Okay, Brian.
Okay, first, I'm gonna go back to, uh, the chief's comment, um, that we're eliminating that bill that we've been paying for a long time is a great thing, I've I questioned that for a long time, a while back, hopefully the new system radios, uh, will work well. Uh, some other municipalities, townships, government organizations have had issues with radio system installations, hopefully this will not, uh, um, have for us. To the point on the Houndstooth Lane work, what construction work are we going to be doing on Houndstooth Lane?
The issue there is we had a sinkhole show up and it turns out there was a fault in the drainage pipe under the road. So the length of the drainage pipe under the road and out to the basin has been scoped. They took pictures inside and have identified places that it needs to be repaired, replaced and or put a liner in to keep it flowing smoothly. Uh, Ed, is there anything more we should add to that or is that close enough?
Am I unmuted?
Okay, yeah, now you are.
Yeah, a liner will be installed in some pipes, some, some short sections are so bad they'll be replaced. And I think there'll be some repairs to certain inlet boxes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor? Next we have, uh, to do a bid for equipment rental.
And we would like, I make a motion to award the bid for equipment rental to D and L Construction in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
No second emotion.
Uh, I do have a question.
This was the only bid we got, we put it out on Penn Bid, and he's the only guy who bid on it.
Wait, wait, we're gonna, we're, we're spending three hundred and some thousand dollars on equipment rental?
No, Mike, this is the thing that we do every year where we put out a bid with a certain types of equipment and a up to but not to exceed number of hours, that's a not to exceed number. Depend, but we put, we give them the number of hours to estimate so that we're comparing apples to apples.
So we've only gotten one bid?
We got one bid, which is why I'm making the motion to award it.
Okay, any questions out there?
Brian.
Brian Curry.
Brian.
Okay, the question I have is, I don't think we've done a equipment rental, you know, labor rental for several years and now it's coming back again. And it's also, if I remember right, it's coming back to a vendor that we've had problems with in the past with insufficient insurance, improper insurance, something like this. So, I've got two questions here is, why do we need the contract or the provision again after several years of not having it? And then have these people changed or are someone going to check that their paperwork is properly and fully completed this time?
That should, that should have been in the bid information that we received.
And
Was it?
We do check that when we get, Kathy unmuted, go ahead, Kathy.
Um, that was all in the bid and we do check all of that, um, it has to be included.
Okay, that, those, those requirements were in bids in the past and it didn't happen. In the response that you've gotten back, you know, to the bids, et cetera, does it have all the appropriate paperwork with it at this point?
It does.
Okay.
And, and Brian, Brian, to your first question, um, we have a fairly aggressive road program right now and there were a lot of hear music, Ted, would you mute that? The there were years that not a lot of work got done, there was more planning than work. And over the winter, we've been doing some preparation of drains and stuff, and this summer, there will be like the length of Kimberton Road and some other fairly long projects that may, may need assistance for, this is not a guarantee that he's gonna get a lot of work, but it's a guarantee that he can provide capability for us up to that limit.
Okay. Any other questions out there?
No, I don't see any.
All those in favor?
I.
Alright, next we have authorized sale of surplus, uh, Chevy four-by-four truck and Dodge four-by-four.
You can do that for Bernie. Oh, wait, he's muted.
Yeah, you're muted.
Oops, sorry, uh, motion to authorize the sale on municipal bid of surplus property, a two thousand and seven Chevy four-by-four truck and a two thousand and fourteen Dodge four-by-four truck.
I second.
Any comments or questions out there?
Brian Curry has his hand up.
Okay.
Okay. What was the prior usage of these trucks? Were these police vehicles or are they public works vehicles?
I think we have asked the chief.
One was Richard's truck, I believe, right?
Sarah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the two thousand and seven was for zoning, the Chevy Colorado. And the two thousand and fourteen Dodge was originally the police department's, then it was handed down to the road department. And now, uh, they're gonna replace that road, the Dodge with the, uh, Chevy Silverado that we just took out of the police rotation.
So they're, they get your hand to me down, huh?
That's the way it's working now.
Pretty cool.
It sounds like trickle-down in, in, uh, in action, thank you very much, Mike.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, Brian.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
I.
I, alright, next we have the purchase of the EV charging station.
Make a motion to authorize the purchase of the EV charging station in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and nine dollars.
I second that.
Any comments or questions, Michelle?
I don't see anything.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Now we go into public comments.
Before we go there, did Donna, did we approve your project on Saturday under the umbrella of the monthly projects? I think we're clear on everything, right?
I'm looking for Donna to unmute her, I don't see her here.
Okay, it's past your bedtime, alright, then, public comments, please, thank you.
Any public comments?
I do not see any. Oh, there's one.
Yes, it's Ken, thank you, just a quick comment, um, if I can speak for Donna, I believe she is aware that, um, it's been approved, she just put something out uh, calling us to action to, uh, to meet at the repairium buffer on Saturday, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. But we do have a whole township full of buffers, so.
Okay, well, Bernie made a motion.
Oh.
To adjourn.
Oh, he did, I'm sorry. Any other, no, no business from the floor, huh? Thank you very much, I will second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you very much.
See ya, everybody.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Brian, I think you should put those devices so they're not so close to each other because I think that's why we get the reverb. If I have two iPads open at the table and they're, they need to be several feet apart before they don't conflict with each other, so. Mark Thompson, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Tomorrow. And thank you very much.
For the remainder, very, thank you.
And welcome to West Vincent, we look forward to a long and happy relationship.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, we'll talk soon.
Alright, great, thank you very much, bye-bye.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, good night, thank you both for running a good meeting for us.
You're welcome.
Alright, take care, thank you.
Good night.
Alright, bye-bye.
Bye.